Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the November 4th, 2021 meeting of the Columbia County Planning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Caraway will lead us in the pledge.
Y'all would bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for yet again another beautiful day, this lovely fall weather that we're enjoying. We're going to ask you to please look over us this evening and guide us. We want to thank you for allowing all these folks to come join and participate in this process. We want to thank you for all the first responders and ask that you look over those people that look over us on a day-to-day basis. All these things in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. If I could ask you to please silence your cellphones and we'll go ahead and get the preliminary items out of the way, but we'll go ahead before we, and we'll let everybody come in and be seated before we start the meeting. So if you'll bear with us, we'll get this done. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for a 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from our October 21st meeting. If there are no additions or amendments, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do you hear second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes as submitted stands 5-0. Gentlemen, you've also a chance to review the agenda for tonight's meeting. I believe we do have an additional item that we need to add.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to add to the agenda item H2B2, temporary use authorization.
Okay. And could we have for the record, who's going to present that?
Jennifer.
Okay, Jennifer, could you give us a quick rundown of what that is?
Temporary use authorization.
Okay, so the motion to add has been made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to add the item to the agenda? Okay, that'll pass as 5-0 and that'll go to H2B2. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on November 16th, 2021 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden and she'll give you a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these chambers. If you have something that you'd like to present to us in our public hearing or in our public comments section at the end of the meeting, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone, give us your name and home address, and we'd like you to take three to five minutes to give us your position for or against, or whatever information you'd like us to have that is not germane to the issue that's being presented that if you gave it to us at the end of the meeting. We do have two particular items tonight, a rezoning at Apling and one on Owens Road, that people may get emotional. I want to remind everybody to be ladies and gentlemen, to address each other with respect, to address the Commissioners, not the gallery. People have feelings. We're all here to, as residents in Columbia County, trying to express opinions that we believe are best. So again, I will remind you to behave, and if you don't, I will have the offending folks escorted out, and if it gets to the point, I've never had to do this in 14 years, but I will clear the room. So that being said, let's take a minute or two, let folks file in. If you've got an empty chair next to you, please raise your hand so folks can be seated. And gentlemen, if we have ladies standing, I would appreciate it if some of y'all would give up your seat for the ladies as they come in. Who's that? We don't, if they're gone out there, ladies, do we have any more agendas? Okay, we don't? Okay. We do not. But they'll be announcing the agenda items and talking through those. We won't be here more than seven or eight hours, so we'll be all right. And we do have some seats up front here too, so feel free. And sir, as you're coming into the public meeting, if I could ask you to remove your hat, please. Mr. Sterling, are we going to have a capacity issue that we need to address here?
Not sure I can count.
What?
Might get too many more, we might have to do a head count real quick.
Okay. What's the capacity for fire marshal?
118.
118. Why don't we go ahead and start a head count on where we are? I want to allow everybody in that wants to come in. We do have some room down front, ladies, so if y'all want to come on down. Commissioner Wilder looks mean, but he's not. Okay. How many more can we take? Want to go ahead and get six more outside the door? We've got enough chairs. Okay, why don't we stop with her? And we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting.
Jim, we go through a couple items and we can ask those.
We can. Because Apling will come before Owens Road, so maybe we can get a couple of folks to swap.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Two was here for the sign. They can leave.
And then the most.
Two was. Five.
Yeah, we've got three.
You moved both of them.
Why don't we go ahead and get them?
Yeah, that's right.
What are you going to do? Going to do those first?
Yeah, we'll do the first couple.
I was talking about do the Apling first.
No, 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 no.
Follow in order.
All right, yeah, we'll follow the agenda and get them out of the way. Ms. Montgomery, let's go ahead and get started. We'll have a sign review for Greenpoint.
Yes, sir. This is a review for permanent signage locations and sizes for the Greenpoint planned unit development off Wrightsboro Road and Apling Harlem Roads. They are proposing five community marker signs that are under review with this request. And this is the location of the PUD in the light blue on the map. And these are the proposed sign locations. So we have four kind of boundary markers, north, south, east and west, and then one central sign near the roundabout across from the existing gas station. The proposed signs are obelisk designs with the Greenpoint logo on them. Two of the signs would have wording. The one at Pumpkin Center would have the Greenpoint wording on the screening wall, as would the southern sign at Greenpoint South, that is the residential development behind the school. All of the signs are, meet the county size requirements and they're being permitted under allowances for a mixed-use project entrance sign in the case of the Westernmost sign here, and for the other four signs as commercial signage on undeveloped commercial property, based on the zoning under the planned unit development. So there are three different sign heights. The largest sign is the center one at the roundabout. That was 15 feet in height. The two signs on Apling Harlem Road are 12 feet in height, and then the two on Wrightsboro are the shorter ones at eight feet in height. Again, the size, the height and the size of the signage all meet the code requirements, and we do have more detailed location plans that show they meet the setback requirements as well. And staff is recommending approval of the signs.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve as submitted to deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve H2A1 sign review for Greenpoint.
Do you hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ladies, we've got some seats down front. Y'all would like to come on in. Ms. Neal, temporary use authorization, tax map 29 parcel 53 Echo.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a temporary use authorization at 1680 Swent Road on 6.07 acres, currently zoned R.A., residential agricultural. It shows the location of the site. It shows the zoning of the site, completely surrounded by R.A. zoning as well. And this shows their site plan. They're just proposing to build a house here and a shop here, and they are requesting a 38-foot travel trailer there during the construction of their home. They have already applied for permits and are expecting it to be done within the year. And staff recommends approval. This also shows the travel trailer, sorry.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve temporary use authorization for 1680 Swent Road.
Do you hear second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. And we've got our additional item, number H2B2. Ms. Neal.
Yes, sir. This is a temporary use authorization request for 651 Gibbs Road on 1.095 acres, currently zoned R2, single-family residential. It shows the location of the site off Gibbs Road. It shows the zoning of the site, has some R2 and C2 surrounding it. And this shows the location that they plan to put their travel trailer while they, during the construction of their home. They have not applied for permits at this time, and they are waiting on the plans that they have to finish getting revised before they submit for the permits. Code enforcement does currently have a case open for this property to try to get it cleaned up, and that's part of the request from the applicants is so they can put the travel trailer there, get it cleaned up while they prepare to build the home. Staff does recommend approval with condition that on a weekly basis, they provide receipts for cleanup and/or disposal of debris and trash on the site to Columbia County Code Enforcement. That concludes staff's recommendation.
How long has Code Enforcement been attempting to get this cleaned up?
I do not have a definite timeframe on that.
Ms. Rhodes not here?
They just notified us of the codes and everything, didn't they?
It's been a couple of months, according to them.
Couple of months?
Yeah, they didn't give us an actual, you know, it's been six weeks or whatever.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
In the event that the conditions aren't being met, place on this too, will that affect them? Will they have to stop?
That will be a Code Enforcement violation as well because violating their condition for approval.
It would be in their Code Enforcement's court.
And let's say they get a violation, they get written up, we go to magistrate court, what's timeline?
I mean, it could be quite a bit, depends on what's, what all's going on with that.
Case load is.
Yeah. We can't give you an answer on what the actual timeline is.
Months. And they've been working on this problem for months.
Again, according to them, they haven't given us a total breakdown on it yet.
Could I?
They're only allowed one more after that.
About what, one more approval?
One more, they'd have to come back a year later for approval.
Yeah, you can extend it for a year beyond their initial approval.
Could I make a statement before we ask for a motion?
Yes, sir. Please do.
Code Enforcement has not been able to get these people to do anything, and it is a mess. I think we put in the cart before the horse to make a motion to approve it until we see some sincerity from these property owners to clean the mess up and then bring it back to us. That's just a thought before the motions.
So if we had a motion to deny based on the condition of the property and ask them to get it cleaned up and then come back to us, would we need to do that in a form of motion or just not here?
No, it's on the agenda, so we'll need an action of some sort, whether that's to approve, deny or to table.
Or approve with a different condition.
Or approve with a different condition, you know, whatever those conditions may be.
All right. All right, this is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, I need a motion to approve with the condition or with an additional condition to deny or to table.
I make a motion to deny on the condition of the property until something passes if it's done.
Do I hear second? Okay. Should the motion to be approved with an additional condition? Because if you deny, there's no condition applied.
You could make the motion in the affirmative. I think it would be cleaner if you made it, you know, if there's a motion or consideration to deny it, to just outright deny it. Obviously, we've been here, we understand what the reasoning for that is. That can be relayed back to the property owners so that they understand that there needs to be significant improvements to the site prior to reapplication.
Because we've dealt with this before.
We have.
And Code Enforcement seemed to want to go forward with it, but with us denying that the property was cleaned up in two weeks, and they'd been after it for months.
Correct.
The motion to deny has been made. Any discussion? All in favor to deny? Motion to deny passes 5-0. All right, Ms. Montgomery, conceptual plan for Hamilton Grove revision, tax map 052 parcel 037.
Yes, sir. This is a revision to a previously approved conceptual plan for Hamilton Grove, located off Hamilton Road. It's currently zoned R2, single-family residential. This shows the location of the property bounded Wrightsboro Road on the north side and Hamilton Road on the south. The zoning was approved back in 2020, and this is the aerial of the site. It is currently undeveloped. The existing conditions map shows the existing tributaries flowing across the property, as well as the floodplain and wetlands associated with them. The property does have a good bit of slope to it as well. A concept plan for this property was approved in April of this year. This is that approved plan, and the important things to note are current, the current access points on the approved plan, there are two of them, one on Wrightsboro, one on Hamilton. And then the internal road layout has multiple cul-de-sacs. The applicants are proposing a revised conceptual plan that would have two entrance points on Hamilton Road. There is an emergency access shown on Wrightsboro Road in that location. Based on conversations with DOT, Wrightsboro Road is a state road, and it is believed that the emergency-only access would not be approved on the state route. So the, with this revised concept plan, the only entrances would be the two on Hamilton Road. You can also see what the internal road layout has changed a good bit. There's still one cul-de-sac, well, really two up at the north end of the site, but the rest of the road system actually interconnects, has a little bit better flow through the site with this layout. The lot count is very similar to what was previously approved. They actually lost about three lots, and they still have the larger lots running Hamilton Road that were the subject of a previous change of conditions and variance to allow the buffer to be behind these eight lots on Hamilton Road. Staff is recommending approval of the revision to the concept plan.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revised conceptual plan for Hamilton Grove located off Wrightsboro Road.
Do you hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you. Preliminary plat for River Oaks Phase 3.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for Phase 3 of River Oaks located off Hardy McManus Road. This is the location of the phase near the back of the development. It's currently zoned R2, single-family residential. And this is the concept plan we'll see in a moment. There's been some minor revisions to this basic road layout. You can see it's a loop road there on the concept plan. It is still part of a loop road. It now has this open space in the center of that loop, so some minor modifications, but does not change the lot count and actually provides additional dense, or additional open space in the development. This section includes 34 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,116 square feet, which meets the minimum square footage requirements for the R2 zoning district. Per that zoning district, setbacks are a minimum of 55 feet from the center line and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. Sidewalks and street trees are provided on both sides of the road, and 3.58 acres of open spaces provided in this section. You can also see the 50-foot buffer around the perimeter of the site, which is also shown on the plans. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for River Oaks, Section 3.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? To approve as submitted passes 5-0. Got two final plats tonight. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for Anderson Farms, Section 2.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Section 2 of Anderson Farms located off Lewisville Road and currently zoned R1, single-family residential. This is the location of the project. This is the second and final phase of Anderson Farms as it's currently zoned. And this section includes 24 lots with a minimum lot size of 1.22 acres and an average lot size of 2.23 acres. This exceeds the required minimum lot size for R1. And setbacks are a minimum of 65 feet from the center line of the road and 10 feet from the side property lines and 25 feet from the rear property lines. There are additionally buffers around the perimeter of the project. Where those are present on the lots, the setback is 10 feet from the edge of the buffer. These lots do have public water, but are, will be served by individual septic systems. Sidewalks are not required in this project, and there are 9.32 acres of open space that will be dedicated to the HOA. And this is the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Anderson Farms, Section 2, located off Lewisville Road.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you. Final plat for Colari, Section 5 Bravo.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Section 5B of Colari located off Baker Place Road. And this is part of a planned unit development, and you can see the location of this section towards the rear of the project. This section includes eight parcels for future townhouse development that will eventually be subdivided to provide 32 townhouse lots. The remainder of the lots are single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 5,850 square feet and an average lot size of 9,415 square feet. Per the PUD zoning, the minimum setbacks are 20 feet from the right-of-way, five feet from the side property lines and 10 feet from the rear property lines. Sidewalks and street trees are provided on both sides of the roads and 2.75 acres of open spaces provided in this section. And this is the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Colari, Section 5B.
Do you hear second? Any discussion? All in favor? To approve passes 5-0. All right, let's get into our public hearing portion of the evening. Ms. Mystery, Major S1, File RZ211101.
Yes, sir. This is a major S1 revision for 213 South Old Bel Air Road on 5.7 acres, and the current zoning is S1 and used as a private school. Here is the location on the west side of South Old Bel Air Road adjacent to Mural Lake Court. This is the S1 zoning. The R2 zoning to the west is Hamptons at Baldwin Lakes. There is some R1 zoning too, and then on the other side of South Old Bel Air Road, there's several subdivisions zoned R2. There is an S1 to the south, which was approved for a sport performance and training facility. This is a close-up of the aerial where you can see the existing building that was a church originally and now is a school. And the existing site. This is the plat of the property. And this is the development plan that's been submitted with the application. You can see that there's two additional buildings, which will be up to 13,000 square foot in total. There will be additional classrooms for the preschool to eighth grade as the school is expanding and getting increasing enrollments. There is a 30-foot setback to the perimeter of the site, and most of the back part is wooded currently. So the comments from the fire marshal is that the fire access will be required to the buildings, and that might shift the buildings over slightly, and the applicants are aware of that. And these technical issues will be resolved during the plan review process. We did have a couple of emails from surrounding residents at the beginning of this review, and some of them was commenting on the fence and the buffers. So staff went out on site and looked at the buffers, and the yellow line is where, the dashed yellow line right there, is where there will be a condition added for supplementing the buffer. So just a little history on this. In 2005, this was the aerial. This shows that the church was already built, which was built in 1996. The subdivision, Baldwin Lakes, didn't exist at that time. This is the 2013 aerial that shows the church was, which is then used by Evans Christian Academy, and the subdivision was just under construction at that time. Here is a survey of the property, because there was a question about who the fence belongs to, and this does show that the fence is on the school property. Here's photographs of the existing site from the site visit. It shows the north buffer at the top there, which is quite sufficient. This next photograph is the buffer on the south side. You've got the fence along Mural Lake Court. There are trees and shrubs on the neighborhood side, and we have got conditions to add trees and landscaping on the school property. There is a playground area at the moment with chain link fencing, and the supplemental buffer will only go up to the chain link fence. Here is the future development map. It is in the neighborhood's area, which does allow schools as one of the uses. And staff is recommending approval for the major revision to S1 for the additional buildings, with the condition that along the southwest property line, additional landscaping in the form of trees and shrubs shall be required up to the existing play area located approximately 300 feet from the southwest corner of the property. The tree locations shall be staggered in relation to existing trees on Mural Lake Court.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here this evening? Is there anything you'd like to give us, anything in addition to what staff's given us? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone of the like to speak either for or? Is anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, File RZ 211101, Major S1 Revision for the Expansion.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, conditional use for massage.
Yes, sir. This is a request for conditional use for massage at 4436 Columbia Road. This is the location of the property on the south side of Columbia Road, just east of Bel Air Road. Property is currently zoned P1 Professional. It is surrounded to the south and the west by properties zoned R2, single-family residential, although this property is actually a Georgia power station, so it is not in residential use. To the east, the property is part of a, a larger row of professional offices fronting Columbia Road. This is the aerial of the site showing the existing office buildings and the existing site. The applicant is requesting a conditional use for massage for this property. She is already a licensed massage therapist in the county and is operating over off of Cox Road. She is planning to relocate her business to this property where she has a little more space since her, her business is doing well, and is requesting a conditional use be applied to this location. The applicant originally requested that the conditional use apply only to the suite she was going to occupy, which is Suite 204. We did slightly modify that condition to avoid the situation we saw recently on Evans to Locks Road where when the therapist went to move from one suite to the other, she had to come back through the rezoning process. So we were trying to avoid that, so we did slightly modify that condition to limit massage therapy to being offered only in one suite, but not specifying which one specifically. In terms of the future development map, this parcel is in the Columbia Road Professional Corridor. The property is already zoned for professional use and is intended to stay in that use, so there, this does meet the intent of the future development map. And staff is recommending approval with the condition that massage is limited to one suite on the property at any given time, with this being intended to allow multiple businesses to operate in the single suite. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Is there anything additional you'd like to add? All right. This is a public hearing. I'd like to, to open the floor to anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, File RZ 211102, Conditional Use for Massage at 4436 Columbia Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? I've got one question. You have one person that's gonna lease, but then they'll sublease possibly to other operators.
Yes, sir. She said that is how her business currently operates on Cox Road.
So she'll have the massage operator's license, the other people will not have to have a massage operator license.
If they operate as individual businesses, they should all have individual operators.
Okay, they all should have it, okay. Okay, so can you make sure that your, your folks know that if, if you sublease? Okay, great. All right. Motion been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Okay, our first event of the evening is our Appling rezoning. Do we have anybody outside that?
We do. We're gonna have that.
Okay, so could I have 10 to 15 volunteers for the Owens Road issue to volunteer to step outside while we hear this one issue? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Did you do?
No.
Is that what it is?
It's gone.
Other good side.
Sir, if I could ask you to remove your hat while you're in the, in the open meeting?
Jennifer, we got a couple seats down front.
Yeah. All right, so we'll go ahead, while y'all are signing, we'll go ahead and start with the staff presentation. Mr. Butler, File RZ 21-11-03, Rezone From RA to C2.
Senator, it's a request for rezoning at 823 Applin Harlem Road on 0.91 acres from RA to C2. Currently, it's used for residential use. This location of the property on the east side of Applin Harlem Road. Again, currently zoned RA. Super much everything else around it is also zoned RA. Then you do have some C2 on either side of Applin Harlem or either side of Columbia Road as well. This aerial view of the property, and also the existing site, again, currently in residential use. Also, the plat of the property. Interestingly, this is actually the plat for this property. There is, we cannot find an actual plat for this existing property, so it's one that we're having to cobble together, kind of what the plat would look like in some respects. This is the concept plan they've given us. Again, with any kind of rezoning request, we're gonna ask for a concept plan. That does not mean they'll actually develop this the way that they're showing it. This is the property in question tonight. They do show these two other properties being involved with a showing convenience store and hotel. So there's kind of two different ways to look at this from staff's standpoint. You know, as part of any kind of rezoning, we have the different factors that we look at when it comes down to rezoning a property. One of those is a future development map, which I'll get to in a moment. Another one that we can kind of use is what's around the actual property. If we can go back to the overall zoning map, so one of the arguments is that you can say, well, there's already C2 here, you know, all along this, this corridor in the immediate area. We can use that to kind of glom off of and have this be C2, kind of ends the, the line of C2, kind of closes it out. You're probably not gonna develop this for C2 for quite a while, so you could use that argument in order to approve this. The other side of it, there's also Vision 2035. That's the county's comprehensive plan. That is something that's voted on by the commission. It's formulated by planning staff, consultants, a group of appointed stakeholders, and also the community as a whole. So it's one thing, it is the, the community's plan for how they want to develop. This area here, you can see the, the property in question is immediately in the neighborhood's character area, and you do have rural neighborhood across the street, and this area is also a rural corridor. Neighborhood's area, it is very much what it says it is. It's supposed to be for residential development. You know, it doesn't really include any commercial development at all. Again, it's for, it's for houses. Rural neighborhood, actually, one thing too, just to kind of clarify between these two options, this is gonna be more dense, basically three units per acre. This is one unit per acre here. See, this is kind of the, the dividing line in this situation is Applin Harlem Road. Rural neighborhoods, again, just what they say they are, looking at one-acre lots essentially, essentially R1-type development, doesn't include any commercial development at all. Again, lastly, you have the corridor that goes down Applin Harlem Road. That's a rural corridor intended to essentially preserve the rural aesthetic of the area as it turns into commercial development. Also, no commercial mentioned than that. So again, we can use the future development map to, you have a very clear delineation of saying this does not meet that. Staff's, in staff's opinion, the Vision 20, Vision 2035, with it being, how it is formulated, you know, the kind of the weight that it carries, in our opinion, we're gonna go in that direction in this situation, and recommend disapproval to request to C2 for the subject property, and that concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, you have any questions, staff? Okay, before I open the public hearing, first, I'm gonna ask the applicant to come forward if they're here tonight to, to add anything they'd like to add if they so desire. Then we'll open up the floor for comments from the general public. And what I'd like to do, how many folks are here for this issue? Raise your hands. Okay, so if you all have, have a person that you've designated as a spokesperson for your group, I'd like for them to come first and let them, you know, take the three to five minutes to, to, to state the, the information they'd like to give us, and then I'll call on you individually to come up. I'm gonna ask you to not be repetitive. If you have somebody that, that, that says they're not for, for motels in the area, one or two of y'all are all we need to hear on that. If you've got traffic, the same thing. If it's a public safety issue, the same thing. So again, we don't have to have 10 people give us the same information, just stating it with different words. So with that being said, is the applicant here this evening? Applicant is not here this evening. Yes, ma'am. Is there anything you'd like to add to the staff's presentation? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that being said, is there a spokesperson for the group? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward and give us your name and home address? Your brave soul coming up first.
My name is Lori Jordan, and I reside at 6921 Cottonwood Drive in Applin. And I want to add some points to the email that I already sent to the commissioners on why I'm in opposition of the rezoning. I feel that the proposed hotel gas convenience station are unnecessary considering we have Circle K and the new Dollar General right next door. The proposed rezoning conflicts with the county's own long-range development plan, Vision 2035. Maintaining the Applin Harlem Road is a rural corridor, single-family homes, agriculture use, open space, civic use. The intent of this vision plan was to preserve the rural character of this corridor while maintaining traffic flow and safety. What is the justification in having a long-range plan if you deviate from it? Current property owners purchased the property zoned agriculture residential, and they have every right to sell their land zoned as it is in that location. Land is still desirable as zoned. As far as hotels, motels, there are many. Some very recently built and remodeled off Bel Air, Wheeler Road, Grove Town, and Thompson Exits, which I am sure are not at full capacity. Does the applicant show any proof that the existing hotels are at maximum capacity? Has a study been done to determine if more hotels and lodging are needed in this area? Lodgers staying at the hotel in the proposed location would still have to go to Grove Town or elsewhere for meals, which does not make a lot of sense to me. Building this hotel is the first step to opening the floodgates of Applin Harlem Road turning into another busy quarter. Will the future of this quarter resemble Lewiston Road? Many Harlem citizens also have concerns for this quarter. I want to thank the commissioners, and I hope you will give these matters considerable thought in your deliberation. In my opinion, District Four is the county's authentic rural green space, a valuable county asset, attracting many who desire to live in such a setting.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, you have any questions? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Okay? Nobody else wants to have anything? Okay, yes, ma'am. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
1790 Applin Harlem Road. I live across from that house. All right, and we already have a huge traffic problem. If you're kind of just trying to get home in the afternoon, you can't hardly get past Grove Town yet. And then, now we are backing up onto the interstate, and I know that there's plans to put that bridge in the turn-in circle. So we, Applin does not want another Grove Town. The traffic, never had traffic before, and all of a sudden, you can't even get to the interstate. I live two miles off the interstate, and I'm back way up before I even get to the interstate. So we just feel like it's a traffic issue, safety issue. Don't feel like we need a motel.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward, and if I could get you to hold your applause, please.
Commissioners, my name is Chris Herman. I live at 6104 Gray Road.
State your first name again, please.
Chris Herman.
Chris Herman.
I live at 6104 Gray Road. My wife and I also own Maggie Jane Snowballs in downtown Applin. And for me, I look at this from a geographic perspective. There's not another hotel this distance from the interstate and entire CSRA with the exception of downtown Augusta, downtown, North Augusta. This is almost three miles from the interstate. Every other hotel is within a half mile of the interstate in this entire area. There's not a hotel in Evans. Why should there be one in Applin? That's sort of my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on this issue. First off, I'd like to say that I live on Lewisville Road right below there. I was county commissioner for that area, Mr. Galius, who's here tonight because he's concerned, lives real close to there. So we all share the same sentiments as you do, 'cause we live there. Now, the other two lots next to this lot in question have already been zoned C2 a long while back. Because of the conditions, I'll make a motion to disapprove RZ 21-11-03 because of 2035 conditions.
Do your second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I think motion good, and adhering to the Vision 2035 is, is the right move in this particular circumstance. Gentlemen, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of disapproval? Motion to disapprove carries five zero.
Now you can clap.
Now, if we could, if y'all could make room for the folks for Owens Road. I'm gonna take a quick break. Y'all can hold it down.
There's a whole lot of.
Jennifer. I don't think Jennifer will have to count this time. I don't think Jennifer's gonna have to count this time.
No, this is, this'll do it.
I don't know the, I don't know the advantage of pushing it back.
That's why I wish we could go.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
He's here for his issue, he's out.
Here's their item, they leave.
He's gonna get votes right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's all right. That's, that's my work. My work.
I was already giving.
Prepared to answer that question.
They talk all that track about.
That was one.
That's the one good and cancer.
Freaking on my head right now.
There goes another one.
I think it's burning my head up.
I didn't even realize it was that bad. I looked in there a few minutes.
I didn't.
Oh, Lord.
We reconvene at 6:49. Ms. Montgomery, File RZ 21-11-04.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning from R2, Single Family Residential, and PUD Planned Unit Development for two properties off Owens Road. The request is to rezone the properties to PRD Planned Residential Development. This is the location of the two properties on kind of the north side of Owens Road adjacent to Brandon Wild. We'll actually see on the zoning map, the larger piece that is zoned PUD is is zoned as part of Brandon Wild. The smaller parcel is zoned R2, which is Single Family Residential. This is the aerial of the two properties. They are largely undeveloped with the exception of a single house that's identified in the narrative as a rental house. And these are photos of the existing site along the Owens Road frontage and the existing driveway. In terms of the existing zoning, the larger property that is part of the Brandon Wild PUD is, was added to the PUD in 2004. And this is the revised master plan from a 2009 revision. It allows 76 cottages and 111 independent apartments along with the community and conference center roughly on the subject parcel. So currently, there's 187 residential units that are approved on the larger parcel that's already part of the Brandon Wild PUD. I do want to be clear, if the rezoning is approved, it is intended that this development would be entirely separate from Brandon Wild with the rezoning. So it would no longer be part of that larger development. Since this is a request for a planned residential development, the concept plan is being reviewed as part of the rezoning request. They are approved simultaneously. So this is the existing conditions map provided by the applicants. There is an existing pond on the site and basically a ridge that bisects the property. You can see this is kind of the high point and then the property falls away to both sides of that. And we did also have GIS perform a slope analysis on the property. So this is the results of that analysis. Relatively level topography is cited throughout the narrative that the applicants have provided as justification for the proposed density and the reduced setbacks. So we did run the slope analysis to see what kind of came out from that. You can see there is kind of along that ridge that it is fairly level with slopes of less than 5%. However, as you get away from that ridge, the property does slope more with some moderate slopes. And as you get down towards the edges of the property, you can see as that yellow gets darker, that is an increasing slope to the site. Based on this and the lot sizes and the density proposed by the applicants, we are assuming that if this property is developed as proposed, it would be subject to the major site grading ordinances. In terms of the proposal, the applicants are proposing 174 single family homes. There would be a single entrance to the project here on Owens Road that would line up with Legion Drive that would require the applicants to install left and right turn lanes on Owens Road. The plan includes a public road network that's kind of the perimeter roads outlined in the darker red, as well as several alleys. In this case, just over 60% of the homes are actually alley accessed, which is a fairly high percentage for residential developments in the county. There are two lot types identified with three sets of standards. For the alley loaded lots, there are two standards set for the internal alley loaded lots. These would be the smallest lots in the development, so these would be anything not on a corner that is serviced by the alley. They would have a minimum width of 42 feet and a minimum lot size just under 3,800 square feet. The corner lots on the alleys would be slightly wider with a minimum of 45 feet and a minimum lot size just over 4,000 square feet. The front loaded lots, which are in the blue around the perimeter of the site, would be the largest lots. They would have a minimum 50 feet of frontage and a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. With the PRD code, there is a minimum side setback in the PRD code of 10 feet. However, with the PRD zoning request, if the applicants can show that the character of the development warrants it, they can request a setback reduction. In this case, the applicants are requesting side setbacks of seven feet throughout the project. There are elements of this plan that could be used to support that that have been used in previous approved PRDs. The parks, the alleys, the large amount of green space. However, the applicants have chosen to emphasize some different aspects of the project. As mentioned before, they've been citing the relatively level topography, which as we saw is, maybe has a little more slope than we would think warrants the setback reduction. The small size of the homes and the provision of gutters on the houses and review of the final drainage plan by the development team. This last in particular, we don't have a great mechanism in place to enforce as the development moves forward. So the staff is not in favor of using these aspects that the applicants have highlighted as the justification for reducing the setbacks. Mainly, this is just because they largely don't really speak to the character of the development as is required by the PRD code to justify the setbacks. There is a minimum 50 foot buffer provided around the perimeter of the property. Since it is a residential project, that buffer is required to remain undisturbed. And the applicants have indicated that the buffer on Owens Road would be 100 feet. There are also multiple park spaces within the site and sidewalks and street trees are required on both sides of the road. The largest park space here is centered around the existing pond and includes a deck and a covered picnic pavilion, a community grill and meeting area, dog park and playground. The applicants have provided examples of the proposed development. So here on the right, you see the proposed deck and pavilion. And they've also provided examples of the proposed homes. As you'll see these two and on the next slide, most of the examples provided are of front loading homes. As we mentioned, the majority of the houses in this development are proposed to be alley loaded. So there's a bit of a mismatch in looking at how the development will actually look and function between the examples provided and the proposed plan. In terms of the future development map, the properties are located in two different character areas. The larger parcel is part of the Evans Town Center Activity Center. And the smaller parcel is part of the in-town neighborhoods character area. Both of these areas allow for denser development, including small lot, single family residential development as is proposed. So in terms of the future development map, the proposal does meet the intent of this map, of the Vision 2035 plan. However, at this time, the application documents do not meet the standards expected of a PRD. We do expect them to be able to provide that cohesive development plan and show us kind of a higher standard of design and higher quality application than we would expect from an R2 or a straight rezoning. Therefore, the applicants have requested to postpone this item for two weeks in order to revise their application documents and try to meet our standards for this type of project. And staff is in support of this request. The recommendation is to postpone for two weeks.
Gentlemen, have any questions, staff?
Did they happen to give you like a water plan for that main central waterway? The pond?
As far as, are you talking stormwater drainage?
Yes.
Okay.
In general.
So the intention is to enlarge that pond to handle the stormwater runoff from the site. That's how they've explained it in their narrative. There are concerns from the stormwater department that the one pond may not handle all of it. So as the engineering proceeded, it's very possible that there would be additional stormwater ponds added that would handle the additional runoff from the property. And that would, of course, most likely mean that they could lose some lots in that process.
Could we go back to the photographs of the homes? So, any idea of what square footage these are?
The floor plans the applicants provided in the narrative ranged from a little over 900 square feet to about just under 1,800 square feet. So since these are examples of homes they've built in other communities, I would imagine they're in the same square footage range.
I don't really see anything here that looks like 900 square feet. Could we make sure that in their presentation, they give us a depiction of what, you know, if this is postponed, on what a product like that would look like as well?
Yeah, we certainly can and I'm sure the applicant's here and he can probably speak to that a little more.
Okay, all right, gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, is the applicant here? Yes sir, please give us your name and home address.
Thank you Chairman Cox. My name is Jim Trotter, my home address is 3019 Bransford Road in Augusta. I'm here to represent Moore Development. Out of Charleston, looking to develop this neighborhood off Owens Road. As Danielle pointed out, we've worked closely with the staff over the last several months really, even before we filed the application. We are requesting that it be continued for two weeks. Continue to further revise that application, answer the staff's questions. We also met, or we had a conference call last week with Mr. Elliott from Brandon Wild, Executive Director at Brandon Wild, and addressed a number of his concerns, but understand that he may still have some more. He ran in the hallway to his counsel. Certainly going to communicate with his counsel following this hearing to try to address whatever concerns Brandon Wild management may have. But we would request a continuance to further revise the plan.
Is two weeks enough?
We'd certainly have a lot to do, we may need four weeks.
You'd rather go for four weeks just to be safe?
So one option that I could throw out there would be to put it out to a long later date, whatever that may be, two, four, six weeks, whatever. And then obviously, if you were able to get that revised in a quicker timeline and wanted to put it on an agenda before then, we could certainly.
We don't want to go beyond four weeks because we've got.
Okay, honestly, and just personally, I'm having some shoulder surgery on the 16th and depending on what they do to me, I may or may not be here and I'd like to be here for this one. So if we could go to that first meeting, I would personally appreciate that.
Go to December 2nd.
Yes sir, I believe it's December 2nd.
I prefer that too because I will be out.
All right, you're out. Okay, all right.
And Chairman, let me just point out, I understand there's a lot of angst here. Certainly, a lot of opponents here. I just want to point out.
They may all be for it, you don't know.
They might be, you're right, we hadn't taken the roll call yet. I want to point out, like Danielle said, it's lower density what's approved out there right now with the Brandon Wild PUD. The Brandon Wild PUD allows on that 34 acre tract, 187 units. We're proposing 174 units on 40 acres. It is a lower density, I understand it's a lot more density than is out there right now. And we understand that any development on a piece in that area that has long since been undeveloped generate a lot of opposition. And that's just part of the nature of it. But we want to point out and stress that it's a lower density than what's out there now. Having said that, we're certainly happy to listen to concerns of Brandon Wild and address those that we can.
Okay, would you ask them to please give us some examples of the smaller square footage houses? Okay, thank you sir. Gentlemen, any questions, Mr. Trotter? Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an advertised public hearing, so we'll open the microphone. If you'd like to make a comment tonight, feel free. We'll also reopen the public hearing. If this happens to be postponed tonight, we'll open the public hearing back up on December 2nd, when we've had the final product to see. So there's no guarantee that what you saw tonight is what we'll be dealing with in four weeks. But you're more than welcome to come up tonight and express your opinion. And with that being said, I'll open the floor for anybody that would like to come up and speak either for or against this particular rezoning. Mr. Spears, are you acting as a spokesperson for Brandon Wild? All right? Okay. We'll find out. Okay. I appreciate it. Yes sir, please give us your name and home address.
Robert Hagler, I'm with Fulcher Law Firm, 3206 Candice Drive, Augusta. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm here on behalf of Brandon Wild and its residents. And I would like to submit a petition signed by the residents while opposing.
Okay, if you could give that to Ms. Dealey, Ms.? Thank you sir.
Well, I think a little bit of history is probably in order here. 1986, I think everybody knows. 101 acres on Washington Road and Owens Road. R2 PUD to permit hospital facility. That included this 34 acres, I believe, I'm not sure. Included the other five acres. Later revisions evolved into the Brandon Wild Retirement Community. Then in 2009, applied for another PUD. And this was to include 440 units of nursing room beds, apartments, duplexes and cottages. Then Brandon Wild built it out, but they didn't build everything paying on this 40 acres. The applicant's request for rezoning stated that it was reducing the density from 279 and 74, and that's actually misleading. There weren't going to be 279 units built on this 40 acres, not really reducing it. After they did that, then Brandon Wild built some houses upper part of the property, which I think are called the Preserve, their cottages. Cottages, and it's not as dense as the rest of the thing is. And when they sold those properties, they sold it to the residents on the basis that you would have this 112 acre park. It was National Wildlife Federation certified for wildlife habitat. Then University Hospital eventually sold the Brandon Wild facility to LCS. And we're here where we are and they want to sell this acres to or development. Now the neighborhood is, could you pull up the neighborhood map, please?
Looking for, you want the aerial?
To the south property, you've got a R2 development that basically has estate lots. One to four acres, one to five acres. Then to the north, got Brandon Wild and along the northern line, you've got the cottages. So what they're wanting to do is put a development in between. It really doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's densely packed with houses. Now, if you look at the comprehensive plan that was passed by Columbia County, the 2035 plan, you've got two areas. You've got the smaller parcel, which is an in-town neighborhood character area. And the general characteristics for an in-town neighborhood include a high degree of connectivity with a grid street network and sidewalks connecting neighborhoods and commercial uses. This particular development that they want to do, got one road in and one road out, not connecting to anything. So it doesn't meet with the comprehensive. Then the larger parcel, it's in the Evans Activity Center. And on the Columbia County Comprehensive Plan, the commercial activity centers are characterized by compact, walkable, high-density development. Future development plan should emphasize connections to surrounding neighborhoods. Well, it doesn't connect to anything. It's not, if you think about it under the comprehensive plan, it doesn't meet with the goals that Columbia County set when it came up with these plans because it's a neighborhood all by itself. I like to call it a flagpole neighborhood. Just got one street going into Owens Road. Another thing the plan didn't take into consideration, and the staff picked up on this, that it was basically a flat neighborhood and it didn't require any grading or much grading. Well, if you look at, if you look at a topographical map, it's quite steep in areas, it's like a turtle back and it's going to require quite a bit of grading. They didn't provide for drainage, they didn't say anything about drainage. And you've got Brandon Wild on the downslope of it. Grade it all out and you make it flat, it's kind of like a tabletop. They didn't do any studies to see whether the ground was permeable and what they were going to do with the water. So you've got 80% of this property going to be dumping water over on the Brandon Wild, then they made no provisions for it. Turn into what happened years ago with Jones Creek, it's a lawsuit waiting.
But won't that be addressed in plan development?
Of course it will. The intent of the PRD, I'm just going to read. The intent of a planned residential development classification created more desirable use of land, more coherent and coordinated development and a better physical environment. more coherent and coordinated development, and a better physical environment than otherwise be possible. Single zoning. I would submit that this doesn't do that in a way, shape, or form.
Mr. Hagler, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up so we can get some other folks to the microphone, please.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address. And if we could limit comments to three to five minutes so we can get plenty of folks, I'd appreciate it.
I'm Maxan Edmonds, Oxford, and I live on Owens Road. Well, off of Owens Road, I live 260 Bowler Drive, Evans. So, I'm on the other side of Brandon Wild. I have several serious concerns. I have lived in the home that I have now for 46 years. I know that the property behind me always been an issue. But may I say this, there are other issues. I can hardly get out of my neighborhood now because of the traffic on Owens Road. It's a danger for an old woman like I am to get out and get on Owens Road. This will only compound that issue. Plus, we are now at the other end of Owens Road. We are fortunate enough to have a nice medical complex going in there, which I foresee coming from the Martinez area of the county. I foresee that they will be using Owens Road so that they can make a right turn into the medical complex instead of having to go down Bel Air Road and make a left-hand turn, which is almost an impossibility now. So, I have the traffic concern, and I have another concern also. When you have a high-density neighborhood like that we're being, that's being talked about today, being proposed, it's bound to have a lot of young families in it because of the price of the homes. I have a security issue because my property backs. So, I would like to know, in addition to all of the information that these learned architects and real estate agents and so forth, I would like to know what is being done to secure that area? What is being done to get those people out of their homes, onto Owens Road, which is already a busy road? What is being done to secure their safety? These are things, these are concerns that I have.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you very much.
We appreciate your time. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
My name is Karen Lennox. I'm at 4275 Owens Road, number 536. That's a cottage at the very back that backs up to Bowler Road comes around that way back up to that right there. This area is off to my left, and it's wildlife habitat. And they're wiping out everything. Not going to be any forest at all where there is now. There's open area, lot of trees, opossums, all kinds of wildlife. Potically. It would be a shame to just wipe that off. I mean, the plan that they have looks to me like they're going to clear cut and some trees out. Not going to be any forest.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I have to say.
We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
Everett Greenwood, 4275 Owens Road, apartment 711. That 711 is located on the most upper portion of the Brandon Wild Preserve Cottage Area, right next to what's up to the proposed development that we're talking about. We made the decision to move into Brandon Wild. My wife and I were very concerned about future plans for the property adjacent to this cottage, which borders on 711. I was advised that this property was for a future expansion. Future development of this property would be consistent and complimentary to existing cottages in the BW Brandon Wild campus, not degrade the appearance and appeal of living at Brandon Wild.
Sir, if I could ask you a question, did you move in when University owned the property?
I did.
Or after it had been sold?
After it'd been sold.
Okay. You moved in after the property had been sold? You moved in before, when University owned? Okay.
Before, 2012, whatever that is.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
This was a critical consideration for my wife and I when we made the decision to move to Brandon Wild and enjoy our senior years of living in the cottage and in Brandon Wild. Brandon Wild is considered, for Columbia County, is considered a gem for senior living. Development and use of this adjacent property should be in line with the existing Brandon Wild campus and in the interest of current residents as well as adjacent communities, and maintaining the prestige of living in Columbia County. Appropriately, residential development of the adjacent property should be done with these considerations in mind as well as those of the surrounding community. Proposed residential development of this adjacent property is contrary to these considerations, would not be in the best interest of Brandon Wild residents, residents of surrounding communities, and, most importantly, Columbia County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Please give us your name and home addresses. These are recorded. And if anybody would like a copy of the CD, are y'all burning copies still or do they just go online? Okay, you can go online under the Columbia County website, and you can listen to the whole proceeding.
My name's Dee Costello. I live at 268 Bowler Drive. My property backs up to this development. Couple of questions I have, not being involved in this sort of thing for a good while. With the number of lots that they have, I'm looking at a guesstimate on my part of 270 cars leaving and coming back in on Owens Road every day. Traffic concerns are high. That's a busy road as it is anyway, even with our neighborhood having three exits. Will there be a second entrance into the neighborhood? I moved from a neighborhood because there was only one entrance going. You couldn't get out of the neighborhood at certain times because of the traffic. Owens Road is going to meet that criteria there. What impact is that going to have on the school system? Increased number of kids. It's a young family type of development. They'll have young kids, be going to those schools. There'll be school buses going in and out of there. You'll have trash trucks going in and out of there on a continuous basis. That is going to put a burden on Owens Road that just got repaved, not hold up with that kind of traffic. A traffic study would be nice to see if, to determine what kind of vehicle traffic we'll have on that. I just got back from Jacksonville where my son lives. He lives in a development very similar to this. Longleaf Branch is the name of it. It's much, much larger. One of the things that I noticed that the traffic nonstop, addition to the houses after about three years in existence, started to go down. Lesser value, lesser upkeep, more transient people coming and going, and that sort of thing like that with the area in Columbia County. I'd hate to see that sort of thing that develop. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak to something other than traffic? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
My name is Jerry Whitworth, and I live at Brandon Wild in the Preserve cottages. I've been in Columbia County since 1974. First came here, we wanted to be in the country, so we built a new house in Martinez. Well, you know what happens there? Inappropriate development all the way around our house. So, we moved to Evans. Live there. Ten years, inappropriate development, so we moved again. Then we were old people. So, in 2009, my husband and I, we began planning our final resting place. And I'm not talking a cemetery. I'm talking a home and a place where we could live and live out our wonderful golden years. We wanted a home that was secure and had lots of trees and lots of green space. And when I say green space, I do not mean a strip of grass and a couple of shrubs. I'm talking forest, just like what's there now. During our perspective meetings with Brandon Wild, too, they pointed out that this 40 acres was going to be future Brandon Wild development when University Health Services owned it. And so, we said, oh, that's such a relief because every 10 years, we get run out of our homes because of inappropriate development. Well, next year is our 10th year at Brandon Wild, and I can't go anywhere. My next move will be heaven. I assure you of that. So, I can't leave, so I am very concerned about the appropriate development that goes on around us. You know, we are older people. We are not old folks, but we are older people, and we're very active. And we meticulously planned our final resting earthly home. And to have it ruined by a high-density, inappropriate development like this, is that... I mean, University Hospital birthed, envisioned, and created this beautiful campus. It's a legacy that they, I would think, would want to preserve instead of ruin with something like this. So, I hope that a lot of thought will go into it. And if you have to develop something there, don't cut down all the trees. Don't clearcut it. And build something that is in keeping with the neighborhood that is already there. And respect your elders.
Al, they're talking about you.
I know.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's Lloyd Van Horn, 1 Bowler Lane. I butt up to the pond there on the property, and I have some serious concerns with drainage. I don't see in this plan that there's a good consideration for drainage. I also see along the border there that they're saying it's a pretty flat area. If you were to bring and put in color the area budding up to the pond, you would see a pretty good gully going down to a stream. And that stream is currently running at capacity anytime it rains. So, I think that that's some consideration should be from our pond at Idlewild that's draining and going in the stream through my property. I echo the concerns that there's some more work to be done. And I also look at all of our land and all of these properties that butt up against the proposed development, that they are four acres, and we're looking out into dark woods right now. So, what is the lighting plan? I mean, are we going to have large streetlights and LED lights going up like we're in the middle of Academy Sports? Or are we going to have a residential kind of lighting schedule? And I think that that's an important part of this process as well, is whether it's going to be uplighting or downlighting, and if we're going to look out the back of our property and look like we just moved into Academy. And the other consideration is that we have some kind of border for security reasons on that pond. Because I do have kids, and I'm on a pretty good acreage right now. But if I don't have a safe spot for my kids to go out and play in the woods, and all of a sudden, I'm going to have a barbecue area and people that I don't know budding up against my property, I think it's pretty generous the way this visual is right here, but I'm literally about 10 feet from the pond.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward? I can sympathize. Please give us your name and home address.
I'm William C. Moye, 4275 Owens Road. I live downstream of both Jerry...
Please say your last name, please, sir.
M-O-Y-E. Sorry. And I simply wanted to share, out my bedroom window is the drainage pond area for this property in Brandon Wild. And the drainage is not full now, but when you put the amount of concrete and impervial surface that would have to be to support these houses. And as was said by the previous speaker, it's not flat. It's going to drain. I don't know that my drainage pond is going to keep it off of me. But I'm counting on the county and the drainage pond to prevent that water from coming. And the other thing is the dust and the noise and the sound as that is developed. At one time, I heard there was a 50-foot boundary between the backside of the drainage pond and where the houses would go in. And that, again, is not very far from my bedroom window. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak that's not going to... There's nothing here for Westlake. For Westlake on this. All right, sir.
Mahim Johnovic, 3713 Westlake Drive, this 48 parcel drains into Reed Creek. Want to make sure that all the existing engineering controls are put into place to eliminate any additional water to Mullins Pond and everything downstream from this development. Second thing is, this high-density development, you average two cars per unit. Pictures didn't show what that was going to look like. When you look at some of the other high-density developments in the area, you get a lot of on-street parking. It just looks awful. So, my number one concern is that the drainage is correct coming off this site. And number two, the appearance of the parking on such a high-density development.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to something other than traffic, drainage, wildlife? I see Mr. Spears coming. So, Mr. Spears, why don't we end with you because we'll open this back up, assuming that this is postponed, okay? You're walking kind of gingerly tonight.
Yeah. Well, with age comes...
Responsibility?
No, bruises and bumps. Bruises and bumps. And having sat in this room for God knows how many years and listening to these...
We know you. For the record, would you give us your name and home address?
I'm sorry. I should be... I thought everybody knows me. Frank Spears. I jokingly say that. Frank Spears. I live at 4275 Owens Road Cottage, apartment 407, on the edge of this property. I sometimes, when I walked into this room, I think about the incredible rich history, what this community is. And I also look at you. I know you're volunteers. You're paid nothing, so to speak. I'm really proud that our commissioner, Mr. Skinner, is here. Sir, thank you. I know you're missing some family time tonight, and you're here with your constituents. And for that, we thank you very much because you obviously care to hear the subject that you... Having said that, I'm not going to invent any ideas. I'm going to tell it to you just like the way I see it, but it's your staff's words. Here we go. Number one, staff, there are concerns from the Stormwater Department that a single-planned pond may not be sufficient during the entire site, particularly with the existing topography, which naturally splits the runoff into two different directions, north and south. Additional ponds may be needed as engineering work proceeds. The overall density and lot count shown is therefore likely to be reduced with engineering. Number two, your staff's words. This surprised me. Developments exceeding 30 dwelling units are going to be required to have two separate and remote access roads unless each dwelling unit is equipped with a fire sprinkler unit.
State code.
And a residential... And a residential. These are nine-hundred-and-seventy-two square foot tiny homes.
Asked in January of twenty at state level?
I can't answer that question.
I believe.
Yeah, twenty, yes.
These are nine-hundred-and-seventy-two square foot tiny homes. Number three, at this time, the staff does not support the application as it does not meet the expected standards for a PRD. The intent of the PRD is to create a more coherent and coordinated development that allows a more desirable use of the land and a better physical environment that could be created under a single zoning district. By multiple requests by your staff, the applicant has not provided sufficient information or justification for the requested setbacks, clear examples of the alley-loaded roads, the interface with the public roads, the parks, and the required landscaping. Email dated twenty-sixth of October, Daniel, Danielle, excuse me. This is from Mr. John D. Cates, Mayabon Realty. We discussed this internally, and rather than try to have a quick fix to the couple, couple of outstanding issues, we'd like to table this for two weeks so we can ensure to get the narrative and character book where it needs to be. We're using Jackson Heights as a guide, and we'll send you this revised book and narrative in the coming days. Thank you. Gentlemen, we've given these folks a lot of rope. Here's my request to you, and I realize your very learned staff has requested that you postpone this matter. We're not going to solve this in two weeks. We're not going to solve it in four weeks. This is a huge decision to be made, affecting so many lives. We've got to do this very carefully. We've got to plan this so carefully because we only have one chance. But granted, it has been said, if you want to control what is on a piece of land, you must own it. Well, my wife said, we don't have the three million bucks to buy it, Frank. I got it. Here's my request. I respectfully request that you, our planning mission members, deny this request for this development to proceed at this point. To postpone this request is this gentleman has asked you to do, come back in a couple of weeks. It's not going to allow us the time to do this right. We're not going to be fully prepared to analyze, to make the changes, because these are very detailed, very comprehensive issues. If you deny it, we're going to give all the parties to sit down six full months to make the right and proper decision. This agreement will then answer so many of the unanswered questions. Then this motion that you make tonight moves to the next body, the Columbia County Commissioners. But you're going to send them a very clear message that you think what they presented, and you've given them ample opportunity to send you this information. They haven't done it. And we don't want to be rushed. We want to think this through. We want to be very careful that we do this right because we're only going to have one chance. This way, the landowners, the developers, and all the affected community members have the right and proper time to make a very important decision. My request to you, let's vote for denial. Give us the six months, let us all work together. We will find a solution, but don't try to rush us for two weeks, four weeks. There's too many issues here. It's not going to be fair. And I think they will take that long to get what we need to do it. They've indicated that they haven't provided the information to you. And I'm a little emotional, but sitting here brings a lot of memories. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to deny, or to postpone until December second.
Mr. Speaker, I make a motion that we disapprove, file RZ-two-one-dash-11-04, resoning for R2, from R2 and PUD to PRD four-twenty-nine, four-two-nine-nine, four-three-one-five-oh.
Do you hear a second?
Right.
Okay. Gentlemen, any discussion? No discussion? My one concern, if we do not allow the applicant four weeks, what are the legal ramifications of that?
Well, in terms of your decision tonight, should you...
And I know we're just a recommending body.
Right. Regardless of, so you take action tonight and with the motion on the table and just for a second, say that it is forwarded on to the Board of Commissioners as a disapproval. This will still go to the Commissioners, they will still have an opportunity to take action, or they in themselves could postpone it. So it will be, take about a week and a half or two weeks of time between this meeting and the Board of Commissioners meeting. They, they would then themselves have the opportunity to, again, either approve it, deny it, or to postpone it. So there's, the options are all still there ahead of them.
So the opportunity for the, for the applicant to revise their plan and work with you while moving toward the decision-making bodies still remains.
Right. Now, the only caveat to that would be is how much that plan changes, how much that narrative changes may require it to be resubmitted and gone back through this process. But minor changes may be able to move forward as is. That would be something that we'd have to evaluate as we proceed forward to the Board of Commissioners. Typically, we would like it to be clean and as submitted for the planning commission things, you know, a couple of scrivener's errors here or there, send it up as, as presented to this board.
All right. Gentlemen, any other comments, questions? Okay. All in favor of disapproval, raise your right hand. Okay. Motion to disapprove carries five zero. And if y'all could hang with us, we've got one more issue that'll go pretty quickly, and we can all get out of here tonight. Uh, let's see, who we got? Mr. Butler filed VA-two-one-one-one-zero-one. This is a drive-through at a Taco Bell, so it's, this won't last long.
I don't know. We'll see. I might, I might drag out a bit. This is a request for a variance sections on IS-one-four-four-eight-two and IF-three use provisions at forty-two-nine-two and forty-two-seven-two Washington Road. Currently zoned C-two general commercial. This is a location of two parcels on the west side of Washington Road. And currently zoned C-two, pretty much everything around is also zoned C-two. It has some R2 and some PUD close by. And also areas of the site and the plot of the property and the existing site. What we're going to be looking at tonight is the existing drive-through. You can see right now, you, you basically, you basically have to drive into the parking lot of Taco Bell and then stack in, into the parking lot itself, so you basically can block the parking lot from being used. Again, with the recent global pandemic, we've seen a increase in folks using drive-throughs and that sort of thing. So it makes sense to have more drive-through room than typical. This shows a site plan here. Again, kind of one of the things that you're looking at, the first one, the IS-one-four-four-eight-two, this is a, a drive-through, is a, an accessory use. It explicitly says it has to be on the same parcel that, that is, is accessory two. This shows the drive-through going on to the public's property. However, this area here is kind of unused. As we'll see on the next picture, it is basically dead space in the parking lot that used to be a, a full access, actually, excuse me, a ride and ride out that was there. No longer the case. So again, there is a kind of a dead space in the public's parking lot. The other things, too, that we're dealing with, if you go back to the site plan, you also have, in Evans Town Center, we can't have a drive-through that faces a road that faces Washington Road here. So again, we're taking care of that with the variance. Again, not really any concerns with this. You know, we're, we're permitting the existing drive-through to remain, and expansion on the, on the adjacent property makes a lot of sense in this situation. There is a condition there, they have to have a recorded easement agreement, change the drive-through between these two property owners. We've actually already received that. It hasn't been recorded yet, to my knowledge. So we're leaving the condition in place in fairly simple and straightforward requests. Staff recommends approval condition.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? I have one question. Any, any issues relocating the, the lighting fixtures there?
Lighting fixtures?
I saw...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So go back to the site plans, all right. So actually, it's not on this one. They are, again, it's on the site, the current site plan and plan area, I cannot remember what they're doing with them. But again, they'll be, they'll have the lighting fixtures there.
They're not going to have to do any photometric studies or revise anything there for any bleed over? Okay, I didn't think so. Just wanted to ask the question. Gentlemen, no questions? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve the conditions to deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA-two-one-one-one-zero-one, variances for the drive-through at forty-two-nine-two Washington Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. All right. We have no text amendments. We have no legal matters. Do we have any commissioner or staff comments? I appreciate the work y'all have put in, and again, I appreciate the public showing up tonight. I, it really, for the, the work the staff puts in, it, it really is, is nice to see folks that care about the community and come out and speak their mind, whether it's either for something or against something, and know that we can all come out and, and work together to make our community a better place. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries five zero at seven forty-one PM. Next meeting is December seventeenth at six PM in these chambers. Thank you for coming out.
Well, I did my part.